Good evening. Today is July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven P. M. Magen O'Tonship Hall. The agenda items this evening zoning case two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one Eagle Trace Final Development Plan Amendment in the second meeting. Staff present this evening Joe Schaefer, Director of Development and Zoning, and Rafiq Uden, Deputy Zoning Inspector. Role please, Mr. Schaefer.
Role call, Mr. Bernard Eric.
Present.
Mr. James.
Here.
Mr. Leff.
Here.
Mr. Teisman.
Present.
Mr. Van Howe. And I noticed Mr. Adler is here. Mr. Graver, I believe, is absent.
Statement of policy. This meeting may be recorded. Such recordings are public record, may be posted online, and could be subject to review in court. As is the adopted policy of the zoning commission, all applicants will be granted an opportunity to make their formal presentation. The audience may be then granted an opportunity to comment, followed by applicant's response and questions from the commission. The chairperson may limit repetitive debate and reserves the following rights: to limit comment to items on the agenda, to limit public comment to five minutes per person, to restrict the number of times a member of the public is permitted to speak, and to enact any other reasonable ad hoc protocols or measures necessary to maintain a fair, safe, and orderly meeting. This policy was adopted by the commission to provide for the respectful, constructive, and efficient discussion of business schedule for consideration, and to allow for property processes required by law. First item up are the meeting minutes. The meeting minutes are printed in front of you instead of being sent out. Do we want to take a minute to review?
I review. I review them.
All right. Motion?
I move to appro-
I just have one comment, or question maybe. Is, should we be including in here the materials, the additional materials that we requested? It mentions that there were additional materials requested, but doesn't specify what was specifically requested. I think it was just the survey, right?
It was the lot survey. You can, I don't, I wouldn't say it's-
Don't typically do that.
Necessary or required. The memo and the tech report are reflective of that. But it's your minutes, so if, certainly we can edit it however you see fit.
Well, I personally would prefer, just so that we could see the tie that we asked for something, and then it was brought forward. My opinion.
You go. Pass the motion with, you know, incorporating that, just sort of like the amendment at the last meeting. You could vote to approve, subject to the following edit.
Where else did we see it? Joe?
The, the technical report that I issued for the June meeting.
Last meeting?
Mm-hmm.
If we want to review to that.
That was in here.
Who was asking for the extra?
Okay, okay. I just wanted to back and look at that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that would have been-
There was nothing else that we asked for beyond what was in the tech review?
It was exhibit F.
Okay, one second.
Is it just that by resolved? Is that one of the items?
Yeah, it's item one and two under the development review. That's just, if you have the report pulled up, it's struck through on page two of three in the tech, uh, report document.
So from an original point of view, the technical review becomes part of the documentation that indicates that we requested it.
That's what I was just trying to see.
Yeah, so what you, you could do is you could cite exhibit, you could cite those specific items on that line, or under, after staff's report, you could put exhibit F in parenth- If you want, however you want to phrase it. But yes, that document's entered as an exhibit and gets retained as part of the record.
So your, your comment is, should it just be the minutes that we requested it?
Yeah, that's what I was just-
So that's there.
I mean, I'm okay if we could tie it. So I'm just trying to find the exhibit F from last time. It's this memorandum.
Right.
That's the, that whole thing is exhibit F.
Yes.
You got the technical review and the memo. There's two different documents.
So F is the technical review that has those comments struck through.
And there's another.
Technical review, okay. So what part of that, Joe, does it say that?
I can just, I have the hard copy here. It was just those two comments that were struck through.
Thank you.
Being read through is correct, but sometimes it's a little difficult.
Yeah, oh, I see. I see. Thank you.
Yep.
So in my approval mo- motion, it's not indicating that we're specifically requesting that?
Wrong one.
Correct, this is the minutes, so which is what she was talking about.
So it would be, if you can continue, a continuous motion for the other, that's, that was for the zoning resolution.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay.
So the continuance that we asked for the additional, this is where we said we-
Right, and details-
If that was stated in the motion.
Additional revised materials will be due, gotcha.
Which will refer back to exhibit H.
Great.
So the technical drawing is really the survey? Right. We didn't specify a survey, then we just said the technical drawing?
Yeah, so the minutes will just say additional revised materials will be due, which includes all of these things to be revised.
That should only be in the motion section if that was actually said during the meeting.
Understood.
You can put that in the discussion, if you're going to reference it, I would reference it in the discussion session, because without having the audio here and listening to it, my guess is the script just got read verbatim.
Yeah.
So we can't add anything to the motion that wasn't said as part of the motion. We can put in the discussion portion, for the purposes of clarity, if you want to cite it there.
Okay. I'm okay. I understand how the tie-out is made. I just wanted to make sure we could see that what was requested, and that they're fulfilling that today.
Okay.
So I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. I move to approve the June ninth, two thousand and five, meeting minutes as presented.
I second.
Second. Discussion? Role?
Role call, Mr. Bernard Eric.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Hi.
Mr. Teisman.
Yes.
Mr. Van Howe.
Present.
Mr. Leff.
Yes.
Question passes, adopted meeting. Before we move forward, just a comment from, since the last meeting, we learned Mr. Bill Anders passed. Just, Bill is a longtime contributor and attendee of these meetings. Our condolences out to the Anders family. Sorry to see him pass, and had a lot of great history for us as we had meetings, so our condolences to the family. All right, up first now, seven oh eight. Eagle Trace HOA requesting approval of a final development plan amendment to add approximately zero point four acres of six-three-one-one Tussack Street Road, PIN three-one-seven-four-two-three-zero-one-zero-zero-three-zero-zero-zero to Eagle Trace PRD, and combine the said area with seven-five-zero-eight Eagle Trace Drive, PIN three-one-seven-four-two-three-zero-two-zero-zero-four-zero-zero-zero, Lot four-nine-zero-zero of Eagle Trace, both currently zoned, planned residential district, PRD zoning case number two thousand and twenty-five dash oh one. Anybody speaking on behalf of this one, please rise and be sworn in. If you're going to speak at all, raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Be seated. The following exhibits were either updated or added, A through H, A, the legal notice, B, the affidavit of advertisement, C, the sign-in sheet, D, the application and plans, originally received May five, two thousand and twenty-five, Exhibit E, the fire marshal letter dated June third, two thousand and twenty-five, F, the staff technical review dated June second, two thousand and twenty-five, for June nine, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, G, the staff memo dated June second, two thousand and twenty-five, for June nine, two thousand and twenty-five, and H, all public comments received between May five, two thousand and twenty-five, and June ninth of two thousand and twenty-five. Schaefer, floor is yours.
Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to update that exhibit list, so we'll, we're going to update all of those dates with the correct dates with the memos and the reports, having been sent out on July seventh or July fourteenth. And obviously, public comment through July fourteenth. We also have the revised materials that we received, I believe the June date was June twenty-third, but we'll get that cleaned up in the minutes, so my apologies there. So in terms of staff report, mine's pretty brief, as we just sort of heard during the minutes discussion. The commission, per staff's recommendation, wanted to see the lot survey drawing and the, uh, the narrative document. Rafiq, could you pull that up on the, um, website, the lot survey drawing? I think we had that just posted online, so while Rafiq's pulling that up. But in short, staff's happy with what was provided. I got exactly what was requested. We got, there it is. There's the lot survey. You saw the legal description came with it, and the applicant did provide a brief narrative, sort of describing, you know, exactly what it was they were doing. Apologies there for the computer not quite catching up on the projection, but that's exactly what I was looking for. I think this coupled with the staff report, I think, makes it very clear of what the request was, so staff has no further issues. I think it's just at this point for commission discussion of the request, as well as the divergence related to it, and the major minor discussion. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I turn back to you.
Thank you. Applicants, name and address.
Kathleen Bullen, seven-five-zero-eight Eagle Trace Drive.
Dan Bullen, same address.
Yeah, we just following up with the additional materials.
Okay. All comments, once, going twice, closed? All right. Questions from the team?
I have no questions.
Thank you for getting our, the information back and fulfilling the requests. This makes it a lot easier to move forward. All right. Ready?
Sure.
Divergence?
Yes. Do I have to read it all? Okay. The commission reviewed, well, divergence review. The commission reviewed each divergence request against the standard set forth within section twenty-seven oh seven of the township's zoning resolution to determine if such request is warranted. Per section twenty-seven oh seven dot oh seven, unless a deviation from development standards is specifically approved as a divergence, the shame, the same shall apply, shall be complied with, sorry. One, the divergence for, for relief, um, for the requirement of Article nine, planned residential district. Does this divergence promote or not have an adverse impact on? I would say all except F. Do I have to read them all?
It's up to you to determine how you want to go through that process.
Read them. We've done it in the past. Let's go.
A, the, um, the conservation and protection of the natural resources, scenic areas, wildlife, habitats, and the historical and unique natural features of the lands, I would say not have an adverse impact on. The health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Genoa Township, I would say the same, not have an adverse impact on. The quality of life within Genoa Township through the protection of the total environment, the prevention of nuisance and hazards, and the provision of adequate light, air, and convenient access to property, I would say also not have an adverse impact on. The assurance of the com- com- compatibility of use, land use, with either adjacent or in proximity to each other, I would also say not have an adverse impact on. The orderly development of all lands within the township to its appropriate use, I would also say not have an adverse impact on. And then consist- consistency with the recommendation of the official Genoa Township Comprehensive Plan currently in effect, I would also say not have an adverse impact on.
So why are you excluding F?
Why did I say that? I mean, it's, it's-
I don't see that really the use of the land is any different.
Because it's not like a really private or public improvement, I think that's why I skipped it. I mean, I mean, I'm, if you want to include it, I'm fine, but-
I would include it.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't see how it changes the use. It's just moving it from one, you know, private owner to another.
Yeah, sure.
Private, right? I mean, residential property, residential property.
So NF, the most appropriate use of land to facilitate and provide adequate public and private improvements, and not have an adverse impact on.
So we're all good so far with divergence? All right, good. All right.
Is it a minor or a major, right?
Minor, minor, yep.
Everyone is okay with minor?
No, you got to read it.
Oh, sorry. Should the final development plan amendment request represent a substantial departure from the intent of the original proposal? What does that stand for?
I. Example.
I. E., okay. A major amendment set modification or amendment shall be subject to submission requirements and procedures set forth herein. The following shall be considered substantial departure from the original application and following review and recommendation of the zoning commission shall be subject to final consideration by the township trustees. A, a significant change in the use or character of the developments. B, a significant increase in overall coverage of structures. C, an increase of the density. D, an increase of the problems of traffic circulation and public utilities. E, a significant reduction in approved open space. F, a reduction of required off-street parking and loading space. G, a reduction in required pavement widths. Or H, a reduction on the acreage of the planned development.
Anybody have any comments on that part to determine if it has, it's meeting any of those?
Seems to me that this is in line with a minor amendment, as it doesn't seem to affect case three H.
So I should just, on the next one, just make sure you circle the ones that you want. To just call it a minor and not requiring subsequent action, so when we read it later.
Right, which one are you talking about?
Put that to the same page you were.
Okay.
So be the motion for the major minor. There's two pieces in-
Which page are you on? Sorry, I cannot see.
Page four. Page four.
Page four, okay. Oh, yeah. Okay, no, okay.
And then we're gonna, and then there's two things in parentheses, that say major or minor.
Yeah.
Minor, and then not requiring action.
Okay.
So just got to read the-
So a minor motion. I, I move to declare the subject's final development plan amendment application Eagle Trace H. O. A. ETL zoning case number twenty, twenty-five dash oh one, including all plans and materials, a minor amendment of the final development plan per section twenty-seven-ten dot oh three of the Genoa Township zoning resolution, thus not requiring subsequent action by the board of trustees. This motion is being made for the following reasons. I would point back to point A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, previously declared not having an adverse impact on the township, um, zoning plan. Okay.
Motion's on table?
Need a second.
I second.
Is that good? All right. Any discussion on anything? Are we good? Okay. Role?
Role call, Mr. Bernard Eric.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Hi.
Mr. Tyson.
Yes.
Mr. Van Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
Yes.
Minor script starts.
I know, seven.
Seven.
I move to approve the following. The subject final development plan amendment application, including all plans and materials, and, uh, which has been deemed by this commission to be minor amendments pursuant to section twenty-seven-ten dot oh three submitted by Eagle Trace HOA at L to add approximately zero point four acres from six-three-one-one Tussack Street Road, PIN three-one-seven dash four-twenty-three dash oh-one dash oh-oh-three dash zero-zero-zero to the property located at seven-five-zero-eight Eagle Trace Drive, PIN three-one-seven dash four-two-three dash oh-two dash oh-oh-four dash oh-oh-oh, Westerville, Ohio, four-three-oh, eight-two, both currently zoned, planned residential development, PRD zoning case number twenty-twenty-five, uh, twenty-twenty-five dash oh-one, incorporating exhibits A to H and all commits, and any commitments made by the applicant during this hearing, which were non-ordered. So I further move then to approve the following divergences for the Genoa Township zoning resolution. The divergence for relief for the required requirements of Article nine, planned development districts. This motion to approve the subject's final development plan amendments application is based on the following facts of finding and conclusions, again, points A, B, C, D, E, and G, eh, E, F, and G, previously declared not having adverse impact on the Genoa Township zoning plan.
Except H, the only other thing, it was A through H, right?
Yeah, A through H, yeah.
Yes, okay.
G.
Isn't it a G?
Yeah, last.
No? Did he go for H?
Well, that was the diversion. Before I did the diversion.
I'm, I'm talking to the points, yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, A to G.
Thank you.
I did not second it.
Anybody second?
I did not.
Not yet.
I second.
All right. Any other discussion?
Discussion I have, Mr. Chair, is just to prepare ourselves as a township for potential future concerns with this. And I have a question of clarification of staff about divergence for relief from the requirements of Article eight, Article nine, planned residential district. So my question is, is that a wholesale, you can have any divergence you want from anything that's listed in Article nine, or is it more specific? Again, I'm not worried about this particular case, but I'm worried about granting general relief from requirements to PRD. And then what is our repercussion in the event that, although it's not been stated, the applicant might do something that goes against typical Article nine standards?
That's a very good point and very good question. So the applicant did in their divergence request, specifically, I mean, we summarized the divergence request for the purposes of just the script. They actually provided you the written, um, full request. I'm sorry, I'm flipping through the papers here trying to find it. But to that point, I don't think it would have hurt to amend the motion to make it, if that's the concern, to make it clear that that divergence is specific, you know, specific and unique to just this request, perhaps stating why you believe the factors are unique. But I, I did find the document here where they, we respectfully submit a request for a limited and well-justified divergence from Article nine of the Genoa Township zoning resolution, which pertains to the use of open space and natural drainage when establishing a new development. And they go on and, and view the provisions of A through, um, of, of, excuse me, relevant portions of Article nine. We believe this proposed divergence is justified, limited in scope, and necessary to the current conditions. We are committed to maintaining transparency and upholding the principles of underlying Article nine throughout this process. But if you want to make it clear that this divergence is specific only to this application and this specific request, I don't think that would be a bad idea. In fact, I would probably advise it. The applicant, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was the intent, correct, of that request?
Because when we normally do any planned district, you would normally write a five-page document outlining all the stipulations within whatever article you're applying to, to switch to, and how your development is going to meet those requirements, and not, that I am untrusting of this application, but just being prepared for any future situations like this of where we might suspect some of those changes. So it might be behoove us to just put some sort of stipulation in it, this is a particular case-by-case basis. You're the lawyer.
No. But I agree with what you're saying.
We certainly, I, I get-
I think it's prudent to do so.
I'm not requesting that the applicant do a normal development text, because we would have requested that last time. I'm not requesting that. But I do think some sort of verbiage in there that just could protect the township for future ad hoc or wholesale switches.
So do you have the exact wording?
The exact wording of the request is, sorry, I had it here and then I-
I find the document, but I can't find it right now.
So we respectfully submit a request for a limited and well-justified divergence from Article nine of the Genoa Township zoning resolution which pertains to the use of open space and natural drainage when establishing a new development. So they, they basically have cited all of Article nine. And then state their basis for why they're asking for such. And that was limited in scope. I suppose if you wanted to question the applicant on the record of that specific intent, if they wish to amend the request to specify anything specific, probably-
So would, would it be?
Behoove you.
Yeah. Would it be appropriate to just indicate that this is a case-by-case basis, and then include the email as a memo? Or, um, an addendum to the application indicating their standpoints on A through F, and how that, that limits the divergence? Or how do we want to handle this, just from an operational point of view?
Sure, no, this is a good discussion point. So I, since it's not written a hundred percent clearly in the documentation, what I would say is you might want to, this is their application, and they're representing it. So I would say, um, I would question the applicant of, do they wish, um, are they agreeable, rather, to amending their divergence request to reflect and then identify the items you would, you think it needs to reflect specifically?
Would we not just put that in the, I further move to approve the following divergences, and handwrite in what we want, other than having the applicant? Continue to another meeting, wait another moment?
I don't necessarily think you need to continue them. They just need to be on the record as that they're agreeable. You can't impose that on them. They have to be the ones to modify the request, because it's their request. But if you ask them and we get them on the record that they are agreeable to such.
Verbal recorder?
Yes. Now, if you also want them to pu- put that in as part of a condition of approval, had them submit that in writing before Joe issues the zoning permit, you can-
What, what, I don't, I don't necessarily need that of them. I don't, I think this is more of an operational, what if we just say that, you know, this, uh, these general divergence requests have been approved, but the Genoa Township zoning commission reserves a right in all future instances, in future cases, to apply all, any and all aspects of Chapter nine, or any applicable arti-, sorry, Article nine, or any applicable articles relating to any, um, rezoning?
I don't know if you would be able to necessarily say reserve the right.
Okay.
I think the request would need to be framed as such, as we're asking for a divergence from Article nine specifically and solely for the purpose of this transaction, in that this request in no way, or that granting this request, we are understanding that any future amendments will be fully subject to the terms and conditions of the zoning resolution that exists at that time, and that this divergence would not apply to any subsequent-
Okay, like this divergence would not apply to any subsequent applications?
Amendments.
Amendments.
Requests. Yeah. Any revisions to, to this development, or this proposal.
Yeah, I guess what I'm concerned about is somebody else doing this and saying it was on public record that you gave a wholesale divergence to all articles of Chapter nine without me submitting, submitting a development text that indicates-
Yeah, so in addition to what I just noted of making sure you cover that base, I'd also recommend that you put on the record, if you're agreeable, if you agree with this statement, obviously. You don't want to put words in your mouth. Of that, the fact that this is a unique, speaking to the unique circumstance of the request.
Okay.
I think your review of the divergence standards have somewhat covered that.
Okay.
But certainly, if you want to amend the findings of, I mean, and Sebastian's motion even mentions that in the findings of fact, but maybe amending the findings of fact as well to specifically note the uniqueness of this request relative to a typical amendment you request, you would see.
So in other words- So in other words, we could amend Sebastian's motion after this motion to approve the subject Final Development Plan Amendment application is based on the following findings of facts and conclusions. In addition to whatever he said after that, we could do item two, that this request is of a unique nature and does not represent a, and then all the other things we just talked about.
So, yeah, what I would foresee is Sebastian probably putting forth, since he made the motion, putting forth an amended motion to amend, and you, you probably don't want to write out exactly how you would want him to state it.
Right.
So you might need to workshop that here in the floor real quick. Of the, so right now, it says divergence for relief from the requirements of Article Nine, Planned Residential District. If the, again, you need to ask the applicant first about whether or not they want to be agreeable to those limiting stipulations. So I think you need to write down exactly what you think you need that divergence to state.
Yep.
And then the applicant needs to hear it and determine whether or not they want to be agreeable to that revision to their application.
I can quickly write this.
And then by doing that, the Second Amendment would probably be to the findings of fact, which is speaking to the, you, this is a unique situation, you, unique request, unique scenario, that is not proposing to, you know, they're not adding units, they're not decreasing open space, they're just essentially moving lot lines. So sorry, folks, for having to workshop this in the, in the meeting, but they're trying to do you a favor in the long term, making sure they don't, they get it right, so.
I'm working on the second one, which is something like the unique nature of this request is unique or unique to this scenario, it does not constitute, what would you think would be the next?
I would state why it's unique, though.
It's oh, okay. Unique to the scenario?
We can just refer to the email, though, for the diversities.
Yeah, but I would still probably may as a finding just.
No, I mean.
Oh. Oh, yeah, I just want to make sure, I wasn't sure if it 100% said clearly. I, I think we all know what the intent is, that it's only going to be specific to this application. I'm not sure if the email is as clear about that fact. So just looking through the documentation here.
Any questions or what are doing?
Well, a little bit, but just one comment to make, too, is that this was, because it's becoming part of our property and part of the Eagle Trace, part of that agreement when we spoke with the HOA and got approval from them was that we would follow their deed restrictions as such, which was to us, kind of how when we read through Article Nine, it didn't really pertain to us because we were already following all of the rules as part of the subdivision.
So the commission's concern generally here is, if I may translate, is if they grant a blanket divergence to Article Nine, they're concerned that theoretically someone else could come back and apply for something and say, well, none of that article applies to me, because you guys waived it back in 2025 for the whole development, so.
I thought that how it was written in the request for divergence was something that said specific to this lot. I can't remember, that was months ago, but I feel like that was something that you told me to include.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Specifically, this divergence would apply only to this request, sorry, it's in there.
It's like, I feel like I've read that.
I was trying to read and glance over too much, and I didn't want to read the whole document verbatim, so I was trying to just scan.
I, I mean, she's right, and it's specific to this request, and I just want to make sure it's clear that if somebody else applies and they say, I don't need your, to write your development text, I'm going to write you an email that just said, all my stuff's going to comply with all the divergences in that chapter. Normally, they have to write a development text as to what their divergences are. I'm okay with approving this, but I just don't want this being the standard modus operandi for anybody who's applying for divergences.
So I probably, so in the divergence, it'd probably be divergence relief from the requirements of Article Nine, Planned Residential District, such request is specific, as presented is specific and limited to.
The unique nature of this application?
This application only. And then in the findings of fact, that's where you talk about the uniqueness factor.
And I do see it in the request here, and it does say this applicant.
But in incorporating the materials and improving them, you are approving that divergence request in that document that was written, that does say it's specific only.
Specific to this request.
To this request.
So how do we pass that then? Finish writing this thing that is going to be.
And then we ask down if they abide by it.
What the first part is, the divergence add. We're going to add an extra finding of fact, they're going to say yea or nay.
Okay.
Then you're going to read it in as I'm going to amend my, my motion in divergence due to this. This is finding of fact, part two, we're going to then resecond it, and then we'll have discussion again.
Okay.
Okay, so for clarity, I have the amendment to, I further move to approve the find divergences, and I have that text, and I'm happy to read that or hand it to you, Sebastian, if you want, want to read it, read it. Great, great. And then the next would be about the findings of fact, and then finding the fact, what exactly we're putting in there?
Do we have to change the finding of fact? No. It would be a second item in the finding of fact.
We'd just be adding a second finding.
And what would that second item entail?
Again, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I would love a suggestion from staff.
But if you're asking me for sort of my thoughts on it, which it sounds like you are, I'd say the unique next factor is here, this request is merely adjusting lot, existing lot lines within an already approved development with no impact on open space, unit count, layout, or, you know, street layout. And probably also that the adjacent property was already accounted for as part of development, the initial development.
Are we not just rewriting the A through G that we did earlier?
You're giving more specific facts, though, because in A through G, you just sort of said no.
They're broad.
But you're, you're giving the specifics.
Okay. Am I allowed to propose my proposed amendments to the motion to the commission before Sebastian makes anything, so we can at least discuss it?
You can read out what you think it ought to be, and then Sebastian can determine whether or not he thinks.
Here are my proposed adjustments to your motion, Sebastian, and I'm happy to hand the computer to you if you would like to read it verbatim, but I, this is more for discussion purposes. So I further move to approve the following divergences from the Genoa Township Zoning Resolution. One, divergence for relief from the requirements of Article Nine, Planned Residential District. Two, the nature of this request is unique to this scenario due to the factors listed above and follows the guidelines of Article Nine, and is merely adjusting lot lines within an already existing development and does not significantly change unit count, street layout, and permeable area.
So I'd say that's the finding of fact.
That's finding of fact, okay? That's right, I had it backwards on my sheet, you're right. So that would, could be findings of fact. Then the other one, all I'm doing is amending line one, which says divergence for relief from the requirements of Article Nine, Planned Residential District, is limited to this request and this transaction only.
I wouldn't call it a transaction.
You called it a transaction!
I'm sorry, did I use that?
This request.
Application.
And application only?
Yes.
Application and request? Yeah. I think I used transaction.
He did, too.
Are there any, would you like me to reread that?
You're going to hand it to him.
But anybody from this, and we have to ask you if you're okay with it. I will reread it for us and then for them. So there's the first, which is divergences from Genoa Township Zoning Resolution. We are approving, or the motion is to approve, divergence for relief from the requirements of Article Nine, Planned Residential District, which is limited to this application and request only, your case. We could maybe put zoning case 2025 is our one. The second is this motion to approve the subject Final Development Plan Amendment based on the following fa-, findings of facts and conclusions, which I'm listing here as the nature of this request is unique to this scenario due to the factors listed above, A through G, and follows the guidelines of Article Nine, and is merely adjusting existing lot lines within an already existing development, and does not significantly change unit count, street layout, and permeable area.
And they don't necessarily have to be agreeable to that, because that's your findings of fact.
Okay.
They only had to be agreeable to how you were wording the divergence request.
Okay.
Which, again, I think after rereading it, they did state that, so.
They did, yes.
But it's not, not going to hurt to have that on the record. And also, remember, your, your motion originally captures exhibits A through H, which is going to be all of these materials, staff's report, the public comment.
Right, so we don't. Okay. All right, are you good?
Good.
Okay. Sorry for that, but I think that was important.
Very important.
I think it's, that was quality. I have it here, prefer to reread it and change anything necessary, but. I would like to amend my, my motion.
I move to amend your approval motion. To note that the divergence for relief, to, to add an extra, is that what I'm going to say? To add an extra diver-, an extra statement on the divergence requests. The divergence for relief from the requirement of Article Nine, Planned Residential District, which is limited to this application and request only. And we also, I, I also move to amend the, the findings of facts and to add the fact that the nature of this request is unique to this scenario due to the factors listed above, which was H, eight to H, through, ah, G, sorry, following the guidelines of Article Nine, and is merely adjusting existing lot lines within an already existing development, and does not significantly change unit counts, street layouts, and perme- permeable area.
I'll second. I'll second the amendment to the.
Motion, we have a second, any more discussion? Good? Roll.
Roll call, Mr. Ben Eric. Yes, Mr. James. Mr. Teisman.
Yes.
Mr. Leff. Mr. Leff.
Yes. Let's pass this. Thank you very much for working with us and going from there. So that concludes this part of the meeting at 7:43 PM.
All right. For business to bring to us.
I don't have any official business to come before you, I guess, just some updates, the trustees. Hearing for the amendment is this Wednesday. They technically opened the hearing at the end of last month, but because of scheduling difficulties and time restrictions that they had, they merely just moved to open the hearing and automatically continued it without any presentation, discussion, or public comment to this coming Wednesday. So this Wednesday will be the first meeting where they actually are getting into the subs, subs. No, they have a special meeting on Wednesday. This meeting on Wednesday will be the first meeting that they have to get into the substance discussion and presentation of the amendment. Other than that, we didn't receive any new applications for August. So right now, I have nothing for your August agenda.
Summer break.
It's up to you whether or not you want to convene, and just for the purposes of approving minutes and discuss whatever it is you might want to discuss. You know, I, I don't know how long it'll take the trustees to get through the amendment, but you all know how long it is. So I think you've probably got an idea of, I'll never say, I'll never promise anything. It seems unlikely that by your next meeting it would be done, I would think. Highly unlikely, but.
When is the deadline, Joe, for the submissions for August, or has it passed?
It's passed already, that deadline passed on July 7th. Yep.
Did we want to change the time? I don't know, we wanted to talk about this, I'm just, like, Mr. Teisman wanted to talk about this last time, so I'm just bringing it forward.
Are we under new items, or?
I think we're just sort of an open commission discussion at this point.
I've been thinking about the timing of the meetings and whether or not seven is the, the right time, the correct time, the best time, maybe is the, the best way to put it, or whether we should maybe move it a little bit forward to match some of our neighboring townships. It is not a significantly big deal for me, so if seven o'clock, if we just want to keep it as is, I'm, I'm okay with that. However, if, since I may have mentioned this to a few of us sometimes, that maybe we could move it up in accordance with more modern work schedules. If that's something you guys are excited about, I would be open to entertaining that conversation. In other words, it really doesn't matter to me, but it does seem to align a little bit more on people's schedules. But maybe not, maybe it's just my schedule.
I like getting dinner out of the way, but.
You like having dinner first?
Yeah. I mean, I think the trustees, the BZA, what time do they start?
BZA starts at seven, trustees do 6:30. Trustees used to be seven, they moved to 6:30, gosh, a few years ago now.
Is that when they went to the morning, afternoon?
They were briefly doing daytime. Trustees also used to have two meetings a month, and a while back, cut that down to one meeting a month just for summers, and then just went to one meeting a month, period, for the sake of trying to, I think, just be a little more efficient. So it, it's really up to you. I can make 6:30 work, that's, I do it for the trustees, so staff has no concerns. We plan accordingly for that. So it's really what works for the group.
And if everyone's okay with seven, I'm happy to keep it at seven.
I'm just thinking, who works where? If you work in Columbus, work till five, try to get up here at six, you're not even before you get here. And then some of these meetings could go longer till nine or 10. It could interfere with a meal, if you will, or even just traffic trying to get.
Right, so people are coming down here and have to present at the meeting and so on. Sounds good.
For me, at this point, I'm indifferent. As, not every day am I going downtown, but if I, like, today I did happen to go, and it is a little bit of a crunch to get out here. But it's something I could plan for if we chose to move it.
Yeah, I think when I joined the commission, we were starting to dig through all the texts. And we had some late meetings, I remember one night it was 10 o'clock, it was a hammer down, let's go. Yeah, we're done. And so it was like, gosh, it'd be great if I could have got here at nine rather than 10, but that's such a rare occurrence that it does seem that seven makes a lot of sense. People can have their dinners, put all that work life aside, and get here at seven for an evening meeting. So that's why I was, that's why I didn't bring it up today.
Interested. But the question I would have, too, kind of to your point, is do we time bound the back end of the meeting? The session, not knowing what's all on the agenda, et cetera, but, I mean, alternatively, if that's of concern, is there an opportunity to discuss that?
We've got a, we pretty much end at 10.
That's the back end.
We're at 10 and we're done, and it's, we're not going to go past that, really. So we'll do a continuance, or we'll do something else at that point, but there's only been, maybe once every couple of years, we might get to that time. We did it once in the review of the resolution, the last time we even came close to 10 or at 10 was a contentious application. We just got to the point where it's like, all right, we're done. And we can pretty much set that rule if we really wanted to, right?
That's kind of what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I don't know if you necessarily, I prob-, I don't know if you could set it as like an official rule of like, these meetings shall never go past 10, but I think you have probably the right to say, you know, we're only going to entertain discussion on this topic until a certain time, at which point, you know, if we're not concluded, we're, we're interested in continuing. I would set those ground rules before that hearing or that meeting.
For the agenda also, Joe and I have a conversation about, there's multiple. For the agenda also, Joe and I have a conversation about, there's multiple things on the agenda for the night. The easy ones, get out of the way first, something that's going to go long and potentially get a continuance that we put at the end to make sure that the other ones get out of the way and we're not strapped for time in case the one goes long.
Yeah, we did that last month, I.
We did that last one. So it's the, without having it in writing, 10 o'clock, we get close to that.
That's been the unofficial policy, it seems like, last. I can tell you in prior commissions, that has no, it has been the case. There's been some late nights here before.
Early, late nights. When we did the ZR before I came on, when I went to the committees, there was.
Going past 11 happened a few times. Same with the trustees.
Yeah.
So, but each board iteration of the commission, you know, views and wants to treat that issue differently. We do sometimes encounter criticism from the public when we start going really late because people do start leaving because they got kids and family. It's just late and, you know, it's hard to keep your brain on for that long. I think we've all been in that position. So the only thing is if you ever get a crunch and you have a lot of applications, you know, you do have a time. So that's probably why I wouldn't make it a hard and fast rule. If you get like four applications and you've got to at least get to the point where you've gotten to the fourth one and at least opened it, you're going to have to do that. So that's probably why I would recommend not making the hard and fast rule, but that's going to be a very rare probably occurrence, I would think, in hope.
Marcy, that might be something new. So if it's on the agenda, we act, we have to open it.
So if we get an application.
We have an application and it's on our agenda list. We have to open it, that meeting due to the time requirements of the law. So we might get to one, I'm trying to think, it's been a couple of years, but we knew one was going to be, hey, you're going to have to come back no matter what. We need to get to these other things tonight. So how about we continue now, you do this, we're done with them. We probably gave them a good hour and a half, maybe a little more, but we had three more things on the agenda that we had to get to. If we would have kept going with that first one, could have, but really they needed to go back and do the technical review. It was like 60 items on the technical review that needed to be fixed. Like, go fix the stuff, but we are legally required to open this. So we just need to be, we need to be cognizant of where we are in the agenda and how long we're going to go. And then I try to manage that as much as I can. Okay. We scrapping the 11th?
So was the determination, we're just going to keep the meeting time as is?
Keep meeting time as is.
Correct, for now.
For now.
For now.
We were just chatting.
We're, yeah.
There was no motion, nothing to vote on, Joe.
We're not changing.
All I can say is Mr. Tysman brought up the idea of changing the meeting times and.
And withdrew his request.
Period. The lack of any action tells you all you need to know.
I don't feel anybody strongly wanting to do the meeting on the 11th since nothing is on the agenda.
Right?
So we will cancel the 11th.
Cancel the 11th.
Cancel the 11th. So we'll be off now until.
Oh, gosh. September 8th. 8th. Yeah, because the September 1st.
September.
The 1st is a Monday this year.
8th, yeah.
So it'll be a little earlier than the month in usual.
Okay.
All right. Anybody got anything else they want to bring up? All right. So next meeting will be September 8th, 2025, 7 PM here. Do I have a motion? Do you adjourn? Somebody's going to make a motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn this meeting at 7:53, 44. Yep.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Great. Meeting done, 7:54 PM.